Call to order the board study session of November 26, 2019. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. If you're traveling this weekend, if you haven't already left, I wish you luck and safe travels. There will be two closed sessions tonight. There will be no action taken at the end of either closed session. So our first item tonight is the student showcase, the New To You Again donation presentation.
Hi, I'm Lisa Rentschler.
And I'm Connor Rentschler.
We started up the New To You Again resale shop a year ago, November 19th, with the mission of helping out students and adults with special needs. And it's a place where they can gain job skills and also employment. We have 18 employees right now, and nine of those employees have special needs. We accommodate them in however they need to, whether it's through a job coach, through the, would be a parent, or a friend, or based on any type of hours that they have. The other couple points of our mission, we're giving back to the community. The Rentschlers, yes, I am related to the Rentschler Farm Rentschlers. My father-in-law was born on the farm, and so the Rentschlers have been around here for a very long time. Connor and I, however, have not been around that long. And we first got involved with Celine Schools when Connor was about six months old, and we started in first steps. And that's when Scott was in community head, ed, and so we have a kind of a longer history than most students in Celine. Connor started in the preschool class when he was two and a half, and at that point in time, it was called ECDD, Early Childhood Developmental Disability, or developmental delay, which is now renamed to Early Childhood Special Ed. Yes. So we have been involved with the school, and Connor has thrived. He got his diploma last year, did graduate, and has now officially stepped out of the capacity of getting assistance from the public school system. So he's working at the store three days a week, and his department, you want to talk a little bit about what you do there?
Well, my department is media and books, and DVDs and stuff.
How many days a week do you work there?
Two, three, two days?
Two to three.
Two to three.
Yeah. So he's, you liken it there, aren't you?
Yeah.
Okay. That wasn't convincing.
It still works.
Yeah. It still works. It does still work. So with the celebration of our first anniversary on the 19th of November, we decided that we were going to hand out our donations to the two organizations that we support. One is Liberty Club, which is here in Liberty School, and the other one was Special Education in Celine. We just wanted to give back for all that they've given to us, wanted to create an opportunity in our own community for those with special needs. And so we would like to present our check officially. Hey, they're gonna fake it, they already know what it is. And you might too, because I posted it all over.
It looked good.
Yeah. So they're gonna do their surprise pieces then.
I present this donation of $10,000.
Wow.
I have a question. Do you ever need volunteers to come in and work?
Yes. The answer to that question will always be yes.
Yes. Okay. Is there some kind of just contact you or stop by the store?
Yes, if you want to set up an official time, we do have a sign-up genius on our Facebook page.
Okay.
But we'll also take people who just kind of walk in and say, hey, I got 45 minutes, or...
I'm an eight-year retail veteran, so I...
Oh, awesome. Yes.
I know how to do that register thing.
Call me first.
We're open Monday through Friday, 10 to 7, and Saturday's 10 to 6.
Okay, I'll stop in there.
And we hope to do more next year.
All right. Thank you.
Lisa, can you say for everyone, in case we'd like to donate, can donate, can you talk a little bit about what donations you would like to receive?
Absolutely.
For you?
Yes. So we are a resale shop, and we accept any clothing, housewares, DVDs, and books that Connor had mentioned, toys, games, jewelry, furniture. We don't, some of the items that we don't take, we can't take car seats, we can't take helmets, we don't take beds. That's just because, bed pillows, we don't take those either. Any type of decorative items, shoes, we take a lot of stuff. And even if you have, like, any of the sports programs are getting rid of their uniforms, we have a company that comes up and recycles our clothing for us, so they pay us by the pound for that, so that's also something that we benefit from, to Linens.
Before Lisa goes, and she mentioned a long history, but you've been a tireless advocate for Celine Schools, for students with special needs. Lisa served on the Peak, which is kind of the parent organization both locally in Celine as well as for the county, and so appreciate all you've done to help build that strong community, not only within the school, but certainly outside of the school as well. And I really appreciate the $10,000 as well.
We all do.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes by filling out the how-to address the Board of Education form that is provided prior to each meeting. Please note, the Board of Education members will not respond directly to public comment. Public comment will be limited to 30 minutes. Those needing additional time should request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting via the superintendent. Individuals addressing the board should take into consideration the rules of common courtesy. The public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against a board member, district employee, community member, or student. We have two tonight, T. Hard, I don't want to mispronounce her name.
Tayah.
Tayah.
Tayah Hadjewala?
Yes.
Very, thank you.
Hello, I'm Tayah Hadjewala. I'm a student at Celine High School. So I'm here to talk to you guys today about the dress code, Celine area schools. So, just a little background, recently, I was in my AP Government class, and we were talking about municipal government and like schoolwork policy and stuff like that, and us being high schoolers, we brought up the dress code. And that's kind of a hot topic, which is why we brought it up. And when I saw the dress code, I found it to be problematic, some parts of the dress code. So much of the articles specifically prohibited by the dress code, for example, low-cut blouses and tube tops, they actually, they place emphasis on how the clothes look on the student, rather than the article of clothing itself where the emphasis should be placed. Therefore, such a dress code sexualizes children and girls in school. And so I believe that change needs to be made about the dress code, and that the school board should be acting accordingly.
Thank you.
Brianna?
Brianna Camara-Sulak, she or hers alumni, so I live at [inaudible].
You're at her son's, thank you.
Oh, we don't do that?
No, we don't do that.
Okay, fine, that's fine. I don't live anywhere. Now, since December of last year, students have come before you and pleaded for you to protect the transgender students of the district. We thank you for listening to us, we believe you would take action. We are fighting for transgender youth voices to be heard. It transitioned into students advocating for their existence, for their basic human rights within the school. This will not continue. We shouldn't have to thank the council for being human, we shouldn't have to thank the council for graciously letting students use the bathroom of their gender identity. We should have had this written down in policy and enforced throughout the district for years by now. Transgender students are scared to use the bathroom and dread gym class because they have to change in the same room as their peers. They are not the aggressors, they are not the ones inciting the fear. They're the minority by a long shot. The parents of cisgender students have nothing to be scared of. There have been zero reports of transgender kids working in the corner of the bathroom or changing rooms making other kids feel unsafe. They are busy peeing or changing into a binder more suitable for athletic activities as fast as they can so that we can leave the space. You know, things that everyone goes into the bathroom and changing rooms to do. We are annoyed, we are angry, we are frustrated, and we will not stop until policy is truly changed. If you thought the students would stop because it's a new school year, you were wrong, very, very wrong. We don't run sprints, we run marathons. And I will not be a part of the community and legacy of bigotry. I advise all of you to be on the wrong, the right side of the conversation because this will go down in history. Word gets around, I've spoken to parents and community members outside of this district and community. They have all heard about this horseshit and are relieved to decide they decided to put their children in Ann Arbor Schools instead of Celine. That's embarrassing. Families are actively deciding against Celine because of this. I'm at the point right now where I had children, and I could choose to put my children in Celine Schools, I would frankly be hesitant. If you're not doing everything in your power to make schools safe for all children, I don't want to be a part of it, and many agree with me. I wouldn't contribute to any way to assist them of bigotry and unacceptance. Now, you get excited over students coming up to speak, but nothing has been done. I said this last time, and I say this again, reelection is only for three of you. Now, you can see, there are barely any students to talk about this topic in the audience tonight. This will continue. There won't be lines of children speaking before you. So I hope you reflect, and you can be a better person and know what to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Response to public comment. Celine area schools has a longstanding practice of addressing requests related to bathroom or locker room use on a case-by-case basis. The district works with the family and the student to offer alternative bathroom and changing areas when they are requested. Each request is unique in nature, and a case-by-case basis has proven to be the best approach. This approach is supported by legal advice given to the district. This process applies to all students. Recent social media posts have stated that only one student was accommodated, when in fact, all families and students who made a request were offered accommodations. Changing for physical education has been and will continue to be optional, provided the students are dressed appropriately. The district will not and cannot comment on or share any student information that would violate students' privacy rights. There was absolutely nothing done in secret by this administration or the board, and the board fully supports the administration. As always, the board and the administration strive to do the right thing for all of our students at all times. The district provides student-parent accommodations for a whole variety of reasons on a case-by-case basis. This is no significant change over the last eight, 10, 12 years. Each student is unique, special, and valued. We continue to believe in transparency, partnership, and excellence. The board always invites feedback and comments. These are best made via email to sasboard@celineschools.org and public comment at open meetings such as tonight. We act as one, and we do not engage in debate via social media or individually, via email or social media. And I will again remind you that everything you read on social media is not always the truth. Thank you. Administration?
Just a couple of quick updates. One, I would like to thank the individuals involved with supporting the Department of Labor Secretary, visited Celine area schools on Monday, and had an opportunity to talk with three of our teachers, Mr. Tomosik, Mr. Vaslov, and Mr. McCullough, and an opportunity to learn a little bit more about our current technical and education programs and the opportunities for students, particularly students who are one, avail themselves of those types of opportunities while attending kind of a comprehensive high school. So that was a great and unique opportunity. A lot of work went on over the weekend by the staff to make sure that visit went smooth and frankly quiet until the secretary was gone, and I appreciate all of their efforts the weekend before the break. Again, I would hope that everyone would enjoy the next several days, holiday break, and a chance to get away, refresh, and get ready for the three weeks between now and our next break, which are always a busy and active time for us as a school district. Lastly, I would like to thank the board and administration at the table in Evan for their willingness to purchase the tickets I'm going to pass around now. These are the Chamber Parade tickets. They are $5 apiece, they go to support this event. As you know, the Chamber puts on this event, relatively costly event, it's a great community event, and I will pass these around, and I know that the generosity at this table is unmatched. And I will start with the secretary today.
Is that called a sum of clothes?
It's like you're reading my mind. I don't know how you, as an administrator, you want the cash right now?
Well, I would, yeah. Credit card on the back is mine. That's all I have. Any community members who want to purchase, as soon as we adjourn, you're welcome, Mr. Vaslov.
Board updates.
Evan? I have a few things. This month, I believe this month, Celine Middle School started a thing that I believe is a continuation of previous years called Summit Learning. And that's basically information that's given to the students about post-high school opportunities and a lot of things like job skills, things about, just ideas to give middle school students thinking about the road ahead after high school as they make those steps to get into high school. It's not a huge wish to say you have to go to college, but the idea is to say, start thinking about this, they welcome you next few years. Additionally, many students at Celine High School that I've got to talk to personally, I asked them, if you had to choose one thing to fix at Celine High School, what would it be? Just to kind of get the conversation going about some things. One thing I noticed that has come up a lot among students' opinions is they believe that the long tables in the lunchroom should be changed to round tables. Their, the general understanding of that was the long tables can be exclusive to social activity between students, and creating a round table will be easier for students to interact with each other, which would be less exclusive and more inclusive. Additionally, last weekend, a bunch of students at Celine High School put on the 12 Angry Jurors play. I myself had a chance to see it, and I thought it was phenomenal, they did a very good job. 12 Angry Jurors, of course, is based off the classic movie 12 Angry Men, a jury room decision. Additionally, there's been some updates made to, by, I think, the coaches, that coach fitness for athletes, they made some updates to the curriculum for that class, and as someone who's in that class, I very positively was up into it, is basically they took the class which had an emphasis on health and fitness, and they just bumped it up like a timestamp, like there's more health, more fitness. Everything has really been overhauled, and it works really well. I'm still sore from like two days ago. And it's really awesome, happy about that. And from the students to everybody, have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Thank you, Evan.
We had the Washtenaw County School Board Association did a, brought in some speakers to talk about social emotional health. It was a great program. The cool thing was that one of the programs was a video that the Celine students put together and to talk about some of the programs. So that was kind of cool, that, you know, we have our students helping participate in, you know, spreading the news about what services are available in the county for other staff and students and parents and the great programs that they have. So it was a pretty good program.
One of the takeaway from that was for us to keep an eye out for the hashtag wish you knew, things that students wish they, their parents knew about what was going on inside of their minds. Go ahead, before, I just want to say, some weeks are busier than others. I wanted to say thank you to everyone who has had the DEI, we're, you know, one more meeting before the end of the year, and the strategic planning meeting, we had the first one here in this room, 72 applicants came, and how many were actually seated in?
Almost, yeah, but a handful, yeah.
The same night also, I just wanted to say thanks to Assistant Principal Shukal and, who was the other one? Oh, and Assistant Principal Steger. We did a presentation to the city council regarding the Celine swarm, and they were most interested in it, and they could see some value for this, this Celine idea, getting some traction across the entire Celine community. And I also saw 12 Angry Jurors, and I loved it. So we have a pretty good drama program, I'd say. Thank you.
Yep. Scott, I just had a follow-up question. Are you guys doing the five-for-20 deal?
Yes, yeah, you have the, tonight only.
Tonight only?
Tonight only.
So they're $5 each, or they're five for $20? Um, yeah, just to echo Michael's comments, I was really impressed by the amount of community involvement in the strategic framework committees. We have a lot of talent on those committees, so really good to use free resources from within our community to strengthen the district. The other thing I've been working on is my goal this year was to do five of our CBA 100 level courses this year, so I'll be completing my fifth this month. I remember Michael's challenge towards the beginning of the year, so I'll have probably all of those finished up by hopefully the annual meeting next year. I just finished, this quarter, I started with finance, obviously. I did policy, community relations, leadership, and curriculum and instruction is next. So I've been enjoying those and learning some things and...
You'll catch up to Heidi and I yet.
I'm working on a few years.
I would like, I appreciated that the Secretary of Labor came specifically to look at CTE classes. I got so far two estimates on taking my shower out, putting a new one in, and there are well-paying jobs out there that don't. I mean, if you don't think college is your thing, look at the trades, industry, there is a lot of opportunity out there. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as printed? All those in favor, please signify with aye. Aye. Those opposed with nay. Here, none, the motion carries 7-0. Can I have a new study session topic? Volunteer Assistant Superintendent Houseley, who wants to talk about budget?
So this is our 2019, 2011 November budget amendment. So the first three slides are kind of more educational, a little bit a reminder of all the things that we do here for Celine and finance. So as you can see, we sometimes talk about these, you might have seen our annual report as buckets, these are the different kinds of things that we manage here in Celine. And basically tonight, we're only talking about the general fund. Apologize, kind of losing my voice. So this is slide kind of explains a little bit when it comes to the general fund and our operating tax mileage that we collect. In general, the state sets, you see by the bar over there, all of these examples, they still total the same amount. So the state sets that amount, then no matter what we collect and tax it, whether it be like seven million, the example where it decreased or increased, the state will just kick in less or more money. So no matter what, that 18 mil is required though, because no matter what, the state always assumes that we will collect that. So you might think we don't need to collect that, and they're going to just kick in more money. Well, they already on top assume that we collect that. So if we don't collect that, we actually leave money on the table. This slide kind of gives an overview of some of the things that happened over the last 12 years. This is one, and the foundation allowance is on the left here. So this is a per pupil foundation that we get from the state. They set this, and as you can see, over the 12 years, we take an average over the 12 years, it's an increase of 0.6%. So our revenues, as you see in the next slide, is one of our largest revenues, is that state funding. It's gone a 0.6% every year. Another big component of our expenses is the retirement rate for the ORS retirement system. And as you can see along this column right here, this has increased at an average of 5% every year. So our costs, our major costs are going up at 5%, and our revenue coming in at 0.6%. So it kind of gives you the idea of what's been so difficult over these last 12 years for school funding, to try to balance those out. So the first thing to talk about how we're, where we are here in 1920, you kind of have to look back at the last time we made a budget. We didn't even have actuals yet for 1819, so it's the first, these next three slides kind of say where we ended up with our prior year. The auditors kind of gave a detailed kind of presentation on those. These are the real big things that we look at here. So again, kind of talking about the other side, 70% of our revenue comes from the state that's driving that foundation allowance, so it's a very big deal. Intermediate comes a lot from the ISD, comes from our special ed funding, goes a lot of this Celine things, our taxes, some pay-to-play things, gates, seats, different things like that. This is one way to break our expenditures, the next one will be another way to break it out, but we pride ourselves on, we put a lot of money into our educational programs. You'll see that it's pretty high in gender compared to our county. We do really well in that, putting our dollars to our instructional programs. A lot of the other things are a lot smaller. These kind of tend to be right in this area from year to year, don't change a whole lot. This is another way to look at the same set of expenses. This is broken down by salary benefits and a couple other items. So you'll see that in our general fund, if you combine salary and benefits, which include health, insurance, ORS percentage for the retirement system, that makes up 87% of what we're talking about. So it drives, excuse me, it drives those costs. So now we're finally getting into our 1920 years, all the way over to the right, kind of this setup, you can kind of see the history across the way in the actuals, as well as our original budget that we passed in June, and at that time had not had any numbers by the state, we weren't even very close at numbers to give a good estimate for revenues. There's our local sources, a lot of the increase, a lot of that goes to the increase in taxes. So the same thing though, you'll see an offset in kind of some of the state sources. You also note significant change in other finance sources, that's with the landfill, that's no longer in process. And then here we have the general fund expenditures. So along this side, at this point in the year, we have some actuals to go off of, we have some payrolls that are coming through, we've got about four months of expenditures to look at. It's an early amendment in the year though, as well as a caution that we still haven't gone through open enrollment. So even though the district's amounts that we contribute is set, open enrollment can cause a lot of different changes between single, family, and people coming on or off of our insurance. So that's still a looming six-month expenditure that we're still estimating, as well as no winter expenses have, kind of have been, come through yet, so those are still kind of placeholders in a lot of that. So then this takes basically our revenues and expenditures we have through the year. You'll see that this, in the 1920 year, you'll see we take them, we now know the actual, what our actual ending fund balance was from the prior year, and that's rolled forward there. So you see, we're just still hovering over that 5%, the treasury deems as a watch list, and we have to complete other things. So still work to be done, but kind of throughout the rest of the year to try to, as well as bring this to a balanced budget.
Yeah, I'll jump in there if you want to go back to the, to the previous. I just wanted to touch base, I think, you know, one of the things, I guess first, you know, to note, we had our audited budget from 1819 last meeting, and then our amended this meeting. We've never before been in a position where we've been able to amend our budget this quickly. And part of what we're trying to do, and I credit Miranda for being able to pivot quickly and really look at how can we manage our, our funding and our expenditures as close to at the, you know, on time as possible, and try to minimize the amount that we estimate, and try to minimize the amount of which we project. And so in doing so, I think, you know, things have started to kind of come into picture for us, and we were able to mitigate a portion of, you know, the foundation that we had projected came in a little bit higher. came in a little bit higher, our enrollment came in below. It created a gap, but we've been able to mitigate that even, even with the, the loss of the land sale to some degree. Reality is, we're still have a deficit budget, and so I think it's incumbent upon us as we move forward, now that we still have a little over six months to go in our, in our budget year, to be able to manage that, essentially that $250,000 shortfall that we continue to see.
Another way of looking at this, we look at our original budget, even though we showed a surplus, we projected a surplus of the 259,000. The land sale was in there at 808,000. Without that, we would have had about a $550,000 deficit. So the reality is, for ongoing operations, we had a $550,000 deficit that we had projected. We came in with lower revenue than expected due to the student count, but, you know, I'll say, you know, the, our staff though did a good job, and administration did a very good job, of reacting to this with some cost containment to about $650,000, so reduction in expenses overall. Otherwise, that deficit of 244,600,700 would have been that much larger. So our staff is doing what we can, but we still have a big deficit here. So more is going to have to be done.
Could you speak a little bit more about the open enrollment? You said that number still hadn't hit, and where, which row would we find that on if I were to keep my eyes on it?
Just in general, for across the whole, all of our expenses, so open enrollment for health insurance is in January, so.
I got to clarify, I got, you got the answer whispered to me sadly while you were speaking.
Okay, different.
It was a open enrollment for health.
For health insurance. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Student count was established and is going through the auditing process, so we feel very comfortable at those numbers. There's always like changes, but they're very, very, very small at that point.
Marina, is the next one in February?
Um, yes. February for spring. February, March time, yes. Because it's in February for March audit time.
And is it like a Wednesday again or something? So it's, it's not?
I think it's always on Wednesday.
It is a Wednesday.
Yeah.
And there is a window of time, so it's, there's just paperwork involved if the student isn't.
Yes, and there's certainly, it's amazing how students, it takes the whole entire month. So, you know, even though we focus on the day for most students, there's collection time, and they can come in in different percentage bases that we do the whole, whole month in.
Right, and then they take a certain percentage from the previous year.
Yep, and so yes, it's a 90/10 blend, window, when we count this number. So 10% on the back on our spring count, and then 90% on our fall count.
The spring number is important in terms of building next year's budget though, I mean, that's.
I want to say thanks, Marina, Scott, and everybody else. I mean, $244,000 was a big number and negative, but at the end of the day, with our enrollment and that $800,000 for the land sale, I mean, it's a little within a shot of the amount.
Just to ring a little bit more on the parade here. But I just want to call again to, you know, we applaud ourselves as a district of being a high-performing district academically. We constantly rank in the top 10% or better in the state. If we were in the bottom 10% academically, our community would be, you know, up in rage over that. Well, we are in the bottom 10% when it comes to our finances. Our fund balance is in the bottom 10% in the state, and our community has to acknowledge that, and we've got to do something. So just want to point that out. It costs us more to have a lower fund balance where we could spend even more dollars on our educational processes.
That's because we have to borrow, because we don't have the cash flow to cover our operating expenses throughout the year. Revenue doesn't come in evenly throughout the year, it comes in large buckets. To get through those areas, we have to borrow, sort of like a cash advance, a payroll lender, right?
But trustee Valenti, is it safe to say that we, we as a district are putting more money into the classrooms than maybe perhaps some of the other districts with healthier, rosier fund balances might be?
That is true, we are. Of the percentage of our total budget, yes, we are clearly putting more into our schools, into our classroom.
But does it offset it? Does it offset it if one's at 12 to 15, and we're at 5.18, and we're at 77%, and they're at what, 55 or something like that?
Yeah.
Probably still doesn't offset it.
So we're still focusing on getting that number back to the fund balance, even though we're partway into the year, we're going to do everything.
Yeah, I think, I think the portion in the next budget committee meeting, we'll be talking about dealing with the 250, or 244 as it stands.
So we're already off with snow removals since we had a blizzard in November.
Yeah, not too bad. We didn't plan for November, no, that's for sure, but yeah. Hopefully, yeah, and, you know, joke about snow days, but certainly that, you know, that, the amount of overtime that it takes, regardless of whether or not we have a snow day just to manage our property is, is a lot, as Tim probably will aware. So, you know, I'm hopeful for, the other is, obviously temperatures have almost a bigger impact in terms of, if we can have a mild temperature winter, that will play to our advantage.
And those kind of are delayed in the month too, so like, those aren't even here yet in the middle.
Yeah, we haven't seen, we haven't seen the full impact of that first snow.
Do we buy our utilities, like, prepay, like?
The unit costs, yeah, we do. So our unit costs, I think we have a pretty good staple and a good price on. The reality is, usage is the key, so, yeah, I think we're, I think we're pretty confident. And we've, we've been pretty aggressive in terms of moving that. It's kind of, it's a lot of time involved, and Director Clary and Miranda have taken time to kind of manage that, to try to figure. And again, you're, it's a little bit of a, it's an art, not a science, trying to project it, but I think our, yeah, season prices are pretty strong right now, relative to what we would have bought right now.
Thank you for doing what you can to keep, keep this massive budget.
Thank you, Marina. Can I have a motion to adopt the 2019, 2020 budget amendment as submitted by Assistant Superintendent Housley? Support. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, please signify with aye. Aye. Those opposed with nay. Hearing none, the motion carries seven-zero. Consent agenda. Can I have a motion to authorize the following items as part of the consent agenda? A, approval of the regular board of education meeting minutes of November 12, 2019. B, approval of payment of the general fund accounts payable of November 26, 2019, in the amount of $945,247.20. C, approval of payment of the Series 2 bond fund accounts payable of November 26, 2019, in the amount of $420,438.30. D, approval of the recommendation of the student reinstatement committee and November 20, 2019. E, receiving file the November human resources report.
Support.
All those in favor, please signify with aye. Aye. Those opposed with nay. Hearing none, the motion carries seven-zero. Items on our next agenda, we will have a closed session to give Mr. Grayden his evaluation, which we are working on tonight in one of our closed sessions. There will be several policies come for discussion and action.
What else we got? We have a middle school student showcase. Student showcase. And that is our only meeting of the month.
Yeah, but only one meeting in December. There is no more public comment. Our next meeting of the board of education will be held on December 10, 2019, at 6:30 PM here in the Liberty School Board Room. Can I have a recommended motion to enter closed session of the board of education at 7:15 PM with intent to reopen, to re-enter open session at 7:45 PM for the purpose of considering material exempt from disclosure under another statute, section 8H. Under section 8H, a two-thirds roll call vote is necessary. Trustee Austin?
Aye.
Trustee Eastep?
Aye.
Vice President Faunce?
Aye.
Vice President Faunce?
Aye.
Trustee Steben?
Aye.
Trustee Valenti?
Aye.
Motion carries seven-zero. We will be in closed session in about four minutes. Thank you, everyone.